Can you hear us online?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear us online?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 25, 2025 pursuant to ARS 38-43102. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on the following agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03a3. At this time, I'd like to do roll call.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp. Megan Weller. Thank you.
So this is the part of the meeting for public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during the portion, this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me as chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on Wednesday, May 28, 2025.
So moved.
So there's been a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, May 28, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made by Commissioner Shi and seconded by Commissioner Lukey. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? And we'll go on to general business, which is the first discussion item is APZ 20-25-00041, Single Use Residential in a Commercial Zone and Adaptive Reuse Incentives. I don't know who's presenting, but is a staff member present or online?
Yes, this is Tiffany Antal, zoning code manager. Can you hear me and see my presentation?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. This is how planners do vacation. So tonight, we have a proposed, this is a work session for our text amendment called Single Use Residential and Adaptive Reuse Incentive. I am partnered here today with Jennifer Michelson from Housing. The primary impetus for this particular amendment is based on bond funding that Housing, our housing team has for adapt, specifically for adaptive reuse projects. In talking with our housing group and the bond funding they had, we wanted to come up with easier ways for adaptive reuse projects, especially those providing affordable housing to work through our development process. So first up, we created some new definitions for the code, and there's two here. The first one is single use residential, and the second is adaptive reuse. So, single use residential is just a fancy way of saying a development that contains only residential uses. So where you're going to see something like single use residential is in our commercial zones. Right now, we do allow a series of all residential projects in our commercial zones, but they are generally only permitted with a conditional use permit, so they're not permitted by right. Adaptive reuse is the repurposing of an existing building from the use for which it was constructed to a new use by preserving the elements of the existing building rather than the demolition. So a good example of this would be the recent conversion of old Route 66 hotels to transitional housing. So in working with housing, we, we had, we came across this idea of a single use residential and commercial zone incentive. This was something that was actually highlighted in the code analysis project. And so for now, we'd like to move forward with allowing single use residential without a conditional use permit for projects that provide a minimum of 20% of all of the housing units within the development at an average of 80% AMI. For rental, that's for a period of 30 years, and for ownership, it, we've dropped that down to a minimum of 15%. This would likely be something like a condominium at a maximum of 100% AMI. For adaptive reuse projects, which would also likely fall under that definition of single use residential, these projects would be allowed as well without a conditional use permit. And again, it's the same 20%, the 80% AMI, but there are some additional provisions to further entice adaptive reuse projects. We've learned a lot from the projects that have come through, those hotels that I directly mentioned. They're fairly, adaptive reuse projects can be fairly expensive. Inevitably, these developers always run into some unforeseen circumstance or situation that usually increases the cost of the development overall. So maybe it's a fire sprinkler issue, or you know, something in the way that the building was set up years and years ago that now needs to be revamped in order for the project to be used as permanent housing. So we added some enticements for adaptive reuse projects. So first and foremost, there is some criteria that has to be met, and that is, is that the building itself be at least 15 years of age. And then looking at across other cities and their adaptive reuse programs, you know, you do want to have an age limit on a building, and the reason is, is you wouldn't want somebody to come in and build a new office building, and then the next week, just turn it over into residential build, or into a residential building. That's not really the intention, is for new buildings to automatically be reused within an immediate timeframe for the purpose of housing. We would want to see those buildings built for, if that is the true intention, we'd want to see them built for housing. And it's honestly unlikely, due to the fact of what I just mentioned, that that commercial construction is much different than residential construction, and the conversions can be trickier than are normally anticipated. Additionally, the project may not include additions that exceed 25% of the existing building. So again, we really want the existing building to remain as much as possible. The adaptive reuse incentives include provisions for parking that the existing parking onsite would be sufficient. No additional new parking would be required for this kind of adaptive reuse. A motel, for example, generally has one parking space per hotel room that would transfer over then to basically one parking space per dwelling unit, but there may be less. So this would allow the developer or redeveloper in this place to just go ahead and keep what's existing onsite. Adaptive reuse projects going through this incentive would also not have to update the landscaping per the landscaping code, because this could mean tearing up already surfaced areas or restructuring the development and, and adding in irrigation, which can be costly and very expensive, not requiring additional common space, not requiring the compliance with the architectural design standards. Again, we're allowing what is an existing building in our community to remain. And yes, so tho, those are specifically the incentives for the affordable housing. In this particular amendment, we have some other provisions that do not apply to residential. We have long dealt with issues about adaptive reuse on in commercial areas in regards to parking, specifically in the downtown and the south side. In the downtown itself, if those properties are in the zoning category called central business district, those buildings can always be reused without the need for providing additional parking. However, the businesses in the south side have never benefited from that same provision. They end up most of the time having to apply for variances and so forth as those buildings transition. What happens when we make the use of, the reuse of buildings tougher, we go through periods of time where commercial development becomes hard and expensive, and sometimes we go through periods where buildings remain vacant for a long period of time. So this too, this adaptive reuse program is meant to be for commercial property or for non-residential uses, or potentially a mixed-use building. Building shall be a minimum of 15 years of age. Again, the size of the building cannot, shall not exceed 5,000 gross square feet, including any proposed additions, and the proposed additions may not exceed 50% of the existing building. And there's at least on-street public parking available within a quarter mile of the development. Quarter mile is what's assumed to be a walkable distance. So for this particular parking reduction, it's, it's the same as you would see in the adaptive reuse for housing. There isn't a require to add or change or create additional parking to reuse an existing non-residential commercial use building. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have. I do want to give you one update on this particular amendment, and that is that I, we, we did present this amendment to the Housing Commission, I believe it was a month ago, and the Housing Commission was actually recommending that adaptive reuse projects not be required for housing, not be required to provide the amount of affordable housing that is currently requested. So basically, just making it a permitted use by right, as long as it's an adaptive use, not requiring the affordable housing provisions. At this point, in working with the housing staff, we believe that the incentive is the best first step into creating maybe what is a larger adaptive reuse program in the future. We are trying to take smaller baby steps based on Prop 207 and other limitations. So when we take the code so far, it makes it very difficult for us to take anything within the code back further. But Jen and I are both here to discuss any questions that you have in this regard, or any of the concerns that maybe the Housing Commission had. And if you are good with this item, you know, we'll bring this one back to you in August for a public hearing. And so with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tiffany. That was a, thank you for your presentation, and I will open the floor up for questions. I know I have a question about the the second provision. It was just
Do you want me to pull my screen back up again?
But no, I'm looking for it online. The, in, the size of the building shall not exceed 5,000 gross square feet. Can you give me an example of what building would qualify for that?
Sure, so as you look around the south side and the downtown, a lot of the smaller commercial buildings in Sunnyside, these are more neighborhood-oriented commercial buildings.
Okay, thank you. I guess I wasn't thinking of those areas, so I was trying to figure out what would be less than 5,000 square feet.
Sure.
That was really questionable, and yeah, okay, that's my question. Is there, yes, CJ.
So the question I had is if a developer builds this, and these are rentals, or they're ones that people can buy, or both?
So, sorry, I'll turn on my camera so you can see me, too. Makes sense to not be just a bubble. The, for the affordable housing, there is a provision for them to be both rental or for purchase items. We generally have more projects go through the rental incentives than we do for the ownership.
And so there's no way they can sneak around this and, and have less than 30 days short-term rentals in these units, right?
So we are not allowed to prohibit short-term rentals, but Jen, I don't know if you could speak specifically to those units that are income restricted?
Sure. Hi, everybody, hopefully you can hear me. If, if a project is qualifying for this incentive, the adaptive reuse, or the single use residential incentive, and they have the affordable units, they are regulated and with reporting, like required reporting. So if there, if it's a ownership project, and there, let's say condominiums, and the required 15% of those condos are affordable, you know, we, we owner occup, or what's the process called? We, we do a verification process in the housing department to ensure every other year, we're in contact with the owners of, of those ownership units, to ensure that that's still their primary residence. I, I don't believe we'd be able to regulate the other fifth, what would that be, 85% of the units on the site, unless the, the builder was willing to incorporate that prohibition in some sort of like CCRs. Which we've seen with Miramonte. I think Miramonte has, we've had some luck with Miramonte agreeing to prohibit any lease shorter than 30 days at their properties. Is that helpful?
Thank you. Yeah, it just, I guess what gets me spun up is that we provide incentives, we use bond funding, we try and help these developers as much as possible, and then they put in provisions, or they allow short-term rentals, and I just don't think it's fair.
One, one interesting kind of aspect of our adaptive reuse bond program that we're developing, it hasn't been approved yet, it's still pretty much a draft. We had a, a good work session with the Housing Commission in March, late March of this year. And initially, we had proposed as staff, we put it together, that every adaptive reuse proposal that would qualify for funding, the bond funds would have to be 100% affordable project, and we got a lot of pushback on that from the Housing Commission. The commissioners really wanted to just open it up, like Tiffany said, allow just by right residential construction wherever we possibly can get it. So, so we, we, we were able to revise, so we revised the adaptive reuse bond program so that bond funding is only being applied on a per affordable unit basis. And of course, they have to meet Tiffany's zoning code definition of, of adaptive reuse at that 20% threshold. So say some, you know, developer, builder wants to acquire a motel in town, and they want to make use of the adaptive reuse funding, they would be committing to at least 20% of those units being affordable, and that funding is provided on a per-unit basis. Like I said, it's capped at like, I think it's about $40,000 per unit. So we're definitely not spending any, you know, general obligation bond funding on a market rate unit. So if our money is being applied to a project, it's only, it's, it's only be, able to be applied to an affordable unit. So that's one of the controls we built in.
Thank you, that's great.
Yeah, thanks.
So on the Housing Commission So on the Housing Commission, is there representative of low-income housing? Um, somebody from the low-income housing community who's on the Housing Commission?
Um, yes, we have um, nonprofit representatives, uh, like housing nonprofits on the commission. Uh, it's always a struggle to get developers um, on the commission. I know specifically, we've had uh, trouble with developers being located within city limits. A couple of them were located in the county, so that was a challenge. But um, we do have, I, I'm not, that would be Adriana, Adriana Fisher is way uh, better versed in all of the current commissioners um, and their occupational connection. Um, but, but yeah, the, the whole point, I mean, the Housing Commission is made up of thirteen people. It's a very large commission and it was intended to be um, there are requirements for, we have sort of like a, what's the word, like a quota almost of like, we have to have a couple of representatives from um, the building community, a couple of re- representatives from the real estate industry, that kind of a thing. So we have a lot of variety on that Housing Commission.
So when they made their recommendation, because I don't agree with that recommendation, um, was it a unanimous recommendation from the Housing Commission? It was.
I don't know. Do we vote? Did they vote? It was like a majority?
It was the, definitely the majority. I mean, it wasn't an official vote, but it was definitely the majority of all that were there.
Okay.
Some wanted us to go even further and make single-use residential by right as well. But they came to a midpoint. Um, and then that, so their recommendation was to make adaptive reuse by right, but keep single-use residential as an incentive, which is basically new residential development in a commercial zone.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions, Commissioner Norton?
My first question is, it, it, why is single-use residential and the adaptive reuse incentive put into one ordinance? Why, why don't we have two different ordinances?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Or it, or maybe, maybe I'm not understanding this. This has, this has to be single-use and adaptive re, and adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse will likely be also single reuse, but single reuse or single use could be adaptive or new construction. So I don't know if you can remember, but we've handled a couple of conditional use permits for some multifamily projects. One was in um, Presidio. I remember working with you all on that. Another one that we did was off of, uh, over near Woodlands Village Boulevard in a commercial zone. We did a, a hundred percent brand-new residential project in the highway commercial zone. So basically, this is just a, a lot of developers see conditional use permits as an impediment. And the reason why is because they have to go to a fairly substantial expense and yet still have the risk of whether or not a conditional use permit will be granted. So to get to conditional use permit, you've gone all the way through concept and site plan review. Um, you're almost ready to pull building permits on the site, but you've got to get that conditional use permit. This would grant a developer a lot of assurance at the forefront. And at the same time, the city would get the benefit of those twenty subsidized units. It's important to realize too, that most of our housing incentives get triggered immediately at ten percent. Both of these are set at twenty percent.
And, and that was, that my second question is, you know, I think time and time again, we, we see developers not wanting to do both market rate and affordable. And I'm starting to lean toward a position of all of our incentives should go to the hundred percent affordable developers because that's what they do and then treat market rate, you know, separately. So I, I can understand where the Housing Commission came up with that opinion. Is there just wanting to see an increase in housing and not the complication of trying to get a developer who's going to do both and wants to take on both? Um, so that's my thought of that. I, I still don't think I quite understand why, why we're lumping all of those issues into one ordinance, but that's fine.
Hey Christine?
Madam Chair, staff, um, I have just a couple of questions. Following up on this twenty percent um, affordable, I'm kind of torn by, I can see why the Housing Commission wants to get rid of some of that and just, because even in our little um, um, staff outing we had last week, the speaker had said that. Um, anytime, if you look at statistically, you know, move-up buyers, you know, they buy entry-level houses. They move up, everybody starts moving up and you, the point is just to build more housing so that as people come in, they move up and they get affordable. Now, in my experience, I've seen a ton of new developments with, you know, staff giving incentives in the valley to different communities for the affordable and nobody's taking it. So I wanted to know, is there any statistics or backups that this is going to be attractive? Because the way they get their financing, I understand, we'd, we'd have all these incentives in different ordinances. Cause I've worked in a bunch of different jurisdictions and, you know, you'd see the projects and they wouldn't have any affordable housing. They may have smaller units, studios, more affordable, but you know, it didn't seem like it worked. And the other thing I wanted to comment on, I can appreciate this. I, I also was a hearing officer at one point in time and I had to hear a ton of these conditional use permits in redevelopment areas. And it is a real challenge. I'm glad you're trying to make this by right because a lot of times I'd see projects and then I'd say, well, what happened to that in the redevelopment areas like Long Van Buren and some of the old, which is similar to our Route sixty-six. And they'd go through this whole process and then they would, you know, you'd think, oh, that's a really cool use. It's going to be nice. And you know, mid-century modern and they fixed stuff up. And then they'd run into building permit issues, financing, fire, and it would get too expensive and they never happened. So kudos to staff for recognizing that and trying to make this by right. I think that is going to move the, uh, many projects forward doing that. But um, I'm still a little concerned about the twenty percent. I've seen it in many other people's ordinances. But um, I'm just wondering, is it an effect, is it going to be effective? Or like Mary's saying, you have, if someone does a whole project as affordable, that's something else. But it seems in the private sector, I've just not come across a lot of people taking that up. So if you have any other information on that, I'd like to hear that. Thanks.
Sure. Um, and I, you know, I'm sure Jen can also answer this. I mean, we've had an incentive program in our zoning code for decades. Um, because you know, right, Arizona, we're not allowed to do inclusionary zoning. So we're not allowed to require affordable housing by right. So we go through the space of um, of trying to create incentives. We know from recent work we've had completed on our code that our incentives aren't moving the needle as far as we need it to go. Um, so we do need to rethink our incentives overall. Um, this, so in a perfect world, we would have that project finished and I'd have an economic model for you um, to say this is the right best thing. Um, but we have the bond funds that we need to release sooner rather than later. And so the idea was is that we could, we could take a first step um, in terms of helping these adaptive reuse projects along, making the, making the concern less for them and trying to have to go after a conditional use permit. Um, trying to lessen the burden on those adaptive reuse projects in the interim uh, until we can get to that final outcome of the, on the code analysis project. I know that overall, I mean, part of the concern that I think many are, are expressing to us is that we don't want to hold back the code so much that, that then we incentivize all the best parts. So meaning, hold back the code from what we really need to do to allow by-right development. We're trying to be very cautious and open to that, but we're also here open to the conversation. I mean, if, if you all feel that twenty percent is not the right number, that's, that's all right too. We're look, we're going to be looking for what your recommendation is as staff um, on these projects where there's also likely going to be a monetary incentive as well. We think that this is where we can get the biggest bang for our buck. Because not, very rarely do we ever get to team this with money. And we know that money is really the big incentive when it comes to housing. And so the city is really stepping up and offering a lot and this code is just one piece of a, a larger incentive.
Commissioner Norton?
Um, question about some of the reuse, since you talk about like the south side and, and such. Um, is there a risk of gentrification in the south side? And does keeping the affordable element in those reuse projects help prevent that? Is that a factor?
Sure. So when I was talking about the south side, that's more in alignment with the incentive for commercial projects. So there's a parking rejection that's for non-residential. So I mean, yes, I guess gentrification happens. But what we're really looking for is to be able to see commercial uses transition from one use to another. For example, a retail store is required to tech today to have parking at one parking space per three hundred square feet. But a restaurant is required to have parking at one to one hundred. A lot of the businesses in the south side have no parking. Um, so it starts to really, um, you, you know, we either have to grant variances because they don't, there's just, you know, the buildings take up this whole size of the lot. There's not an ability for one use to transition. What we're trying to do is make it easier for those businesses and give them the same benefit that those north of the tracks have. But also expand it to other neighborhoods where we see lots of community commercial buildings um, that sometimes go stagnant. Um, they don't have sort of the, it, they could be more invigorated. Um, you know, maybe somebody's going to be willing to take a chance on upgrading a commercial building knowing that they wouldn't have to add that additional parking. Uh, but in terms of adaptive reuse, um, if the concern there is gentrification, again, we're looking at the conversion of commercial to residential. Um, so you know, any, I think any redevelopment in an area that's already vulnerable um, is difficult, but the idea here with adaptive reuse is that we're not likely to see an existing residential use replaced. So we would hopefully not be encouraging to push people out of a neighborhood. I hope that helps.
I, I think I was more so worried about what happens to the surrounding owners, you know. Um, if their rents go up because there's a new place that, you know, was allowed to be built, turned into residential. Um, you know, with bond funding that made it possible, but now they're charging higher rents and the people that are nearby start to get pushed out. That would be my, you know, the trickle-down effect more so. So anyway, thank you.
Understood. Definitely always a risk.
Are there any other questions, suggestions for staff?
We're happy to make changes before the August public hearing. There's lots of time for you to consider this. If there's more information we can provide on some of the existing projects or more information on the bond funding or more information on the affordable housing incentives, let us know. We can come back with a much bigger presentation next time. And apologize for being remote.
And then uh, we do have someone from the public who would like to make a comment. If you can please give us your name and address for the record and thank you.
Okay, here we go. Uh, hi, my name is Charity Lee. I am with Capstone Homes. I am at thirteen eighty-five University Avenue. And uh, Commissioners, I just wanted to say that I support the revisions in the zoning code for single-family use and in commercial zones and adaptive reuse. However, I would recommend not including the requirements of twenty percent affordable units. The requirement of twenty percent affordable housing will disincentivize a builder for moving forward with this type of development. I would recommend providing flexibility in the code without adding more restrictions and requirements of affordable housing. This will bring more units to the market. Additionally, I would not put restrictions on the size or age of the building. There are multiple commercial mixed-use projects that have vacant retail in the city of Flagstaff that could be converted to units now. Um, I agree with single-use and adaptive-use by right. And I also agree that bond funds should be applied to projects that are a hundred percent. Cause from my understanding, there aren't a lot of, there's not a lot of money actually that was received in the bond fund. And if you spread it across um, multiple projects, I don't think you're really going to get what you're looking for. I think it would make more sense to just offer that up maybe in an RFP to a developer that is a hundred percent. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Um, any other public comments? Thank you very much. Then we'll move on. Yeah, thank you Tiffany and.
Enjoy your vacation. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, we'll move on to considera- uh, item B, I'm sorry. Consideration and approval of the preliminary plat request from EPS Group Incorporated. And um, I, that's item, it doesn't have an item number. So. Oh, we'll have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Ben Mahiham, a planner with the City of Flagstaff Planning and Development Services. For your consideration today, we have a preliminary plat request for Canyon Del Rio, the Highlands, otherwise known as parcel R one of Canyon Del Rio. Going to repeat you, uh, Chair, uh, the request was filed by EPS Group on behalf of CDR Dev Corp. Uh, for the site located at thirty-eight oh five East Whitestone Drive. Uh, the proposal is to result in a hundred forty-one uh, single-family lots on twenty-seven point zero seven acres in the MR zone within the resource protection overlay using. And that's my time. Thank you very much. Um, uh, using planned residential development standards. Uh, IDS or, or staff reviewed and approved the preliminary plat on May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five. To give a little context of the site, we're kind of central to Canyon Del Rio at the intersection of Whitestone and Fourth Street. Uh, to the north of this site is Canyon Del Rio Block N, which we've recently, or somewhat recently, I brought to, to you, uh, it's a fifty-home uh, single-family lot subdivision, single-family subdivision. Uh, to the east, I'm going to skip over, there's a tract for detention. Then there's Fourth Street and then you go a little farther in that uh, like lilac color is your uh, vacant research and development uh, zoned parcel. Uh, just south of that, but still east on this project is currently vacant rural residential. Um, sites kind of largely wrapped around um, both south and west by Canyon Del Rio Phase Two or Tract SS of Canyon Del Rio Phase One Block Plat. Also west, kind of kidney bean shaped is uh, O N P Canyon Del Rio Blocks O N P. I'll use my cursor here to help guide the way here. Uh, and that is a uh, multi-family project that, that has uh, site plan approval and is working through construction documents for a hundred and seven multifamily units. All of which is in the MR zone. A little context for, for uh, Canyon Del Rio's background. I say it every time, but in June of two thousand nineteen, City Council approved a rezoning request, development agreement and preliminary block plat allowing the development of Canyon Del Rio. Uh, this is a two-hundred-sixty-one acre site consisting of hundred, or one thousand four hundred twenty-six residential dwelling units uh, with a variety of housing types and two-hundred-twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial development proposed as well as open space throughout the site. Taking a look at the preliminary plat, um, access to the site. Access to the site is provided from Wetstone and uh future John Wesley Powell Boulevard, uh, which is running to the south. We'll get a little bit more detail of, of John Wesley Powell later. Um, again, this is 141 attached and detached single-family lots. Uh, there is 8.67 acres of common space being provided or 32% of gross lot area. Uh, the, the required minimum is 15%. Uh, there's a foots access trail connection, just a little piece before it moves on to uh O N P coming from the northwestern cul-de-sac. Uh, and then it kind of moves western uh to connect to the main uh foots running broadly north and south uh through Canyon Del Rio. This is being proposed in three phases. That's why you're seeing three different colors on there. Uh, phase one is that northern uh coral shaped or coral colored um section. I, that's the extent of the uh special colors that I know. So I'm just going to say green for phase two. Uh, and then lilac for phase three. Let's call that. Um, and at phase two is when you're seeing the connection to John Wesley Powell Boulevard, which is running in, in uh a portion through the parcel here. You can see that running more or less along the southern boundary of the uh parcel uh before it connects to second, segments that are primarily in the phase two of Canyon Del Rio uh with another section here that's being completed. That's on that RR parcel that we, we uh looked at in the vicinity map. And just um a point of clarification, we talked about short-term rentals um in the previous item, but uh limitations on short-term rentals are not a part of staff review for subdivisions. Uh, so if you have questions regarding whether the applicant intends to do that, you can direct them uh to the applicant uh Charity Lee is here uh after the presentation. This is in the resource protection overlay, so a natural resource protection plan was required. Uh, you'll see that uh preserved or proposed pres- preservation is 54.5%, which is over the 47.5% that is required. And you'll see that the majority of those forest resources are being preserved off of lots or on common space tracts. Now, there is a, a Canyon Del Rio um resource bank that is uh established through the development agreement. In this case, we're making a deposit into that bank. Um, we are now looking at the slope uh preservation section, which is majority being met. There is a, a small withdrawal from the bank at 25 to 34.99% slope where the required preservation is 76% and the proposed is 72%. But other than that, all slope, the other two slope categories are being met individually on this project. All right. So finding one is zoning code conformance. The zoning code standards for PRDs in the MR zone. Well, let's start with, with density. Um, this project is, is proposing a gross uh density of 5.2 units per acre and net of 5.7 units per acre. Now, the MR range is six to nine units per acre within the resource protection overlay and outside of an activity center or pedestrian shed. Uh, you'll notice that there is a, it is slightly below what we, we would expect for, for the MR zone. But we do, uh, when you look at the, the DA, it establishes a minimum density that is actually below the, the standards. So that's 367 units for all of uh the R blocks. There's R1 through five. There's four blocks that are on phase two. This is the only block that's part of phase one. So we're just going to keep on a tally to make sure that that minimum of 367 units are being met on uh the R blocks. As I had mentioned before, uh, for lot design resource protection, the majority of forest resources are being preserved uh outside of lots. But where there are, uh, where there is preservation on lots, uh, building envelopes are being used to preserve those. Going into the uh lot sizes, uh, this is, there's a wide range of lot sizes ranging from 2,000 square feet to approximately 6,396 square feet, a very specific approximation. And uh obviously that results in a variety of uh lot dimensions, but approximately brought into kind of two categories. One is uh 40 feet by 80 feet. And the other is approximately 25 feet by 80 feet. And all of that meets the uh, the PRD requirements for the MR zone as listed in this table here. As well as the setbacks, which is five-foot uh front setback, 20 feet for parking, uh, three feet on sides, except where there is um, where it's going to be uh attached building, where that obviously is zero, uh, and then the rear setback of three feet. So as I previously stated, this is a planned residential development. Uh, PRDs do require the selection of design elements uh to a total of five points. Uh, the applicant has selected that at least 50% of the required resources are maintained within common space areas. As we looked at the natural resource protection plan, that is being met and that affords two points. Uh, there's also that the subdivision CCNRs and setback standards do not prohibit the development of accessory dwelling units. There's one point for that. And then uh subdivision includes enhanced pedestrian environments, including outdoor seating areas or larger landscaping areas. And that's one point for each. In this case, they are providing six outdoor seating areas throughout the subdivision. Uh, we are counting the two that are in phase one because when you phase a project, you need to make sure that you're meeting conformance uh with code standards upon each phase. Finding number two is uh meeting engineering standards. Uh, public systems analysis was conducted to confirm preliminary compliance with engineering standards. Compliance uh will be further evaluated and confirmed with civil engineering plans, which comes after the preliminary plat. Uh, access and traffic, a traffic impact analysis was completed in conjunction with the rezoning that included this site. Obviously, some things have changed since that original uh project, namely uh John Wesley Powell now crosses uh the site that wasn't originally part of the uh Canyon Del Rio development plans. Uh, so some changes, some modifications, some studies um have been further evaluating the uh the site and conformance with impacts. Uh, there is a section of the plat that identifies the intersection of Wetstone and Fourth Street may generate the requirement for uh traffic circle and that in that event, uh, the appropriate space will be dedicated. Okay. Additionally, for water and wastewater, there's new eight-inch water and sewer lines provided to each uh lot. Uh, and for stormwater, this proposal uses four detention basins. Uh, two extended detention basins are located, located offsite to the east. And I can go back to a, a slide that has, has the um visuals if, if we need it. Um, an extended detention basin is also located to the south. And then uh it connects to a proposed regional detention to the southwest that's part of phase two uh of Canyon Del Rio. And just uh for my own benefit, I will show you that as well. All right. So you have the, the two here, you have one here, and then you have off in, in phase two right there. Right. So finding three subdivision standards in this project meets preliminary plat procedures, application requirements uh and minimum required subdivision improvements uh, which were also included in the public systems analyses of the previous slides. Uh, the subdivision standards and regulations of lot design, street design, easement design and block design were all evaluated and, and this project is in conformance with them. And with that, uh, staff recommends the planning and zoning commission in accordance with the required findings presented in the staff report, uh, forward the preliminary plat to City Council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Um, do we have any questions for staff right now? Commissioner Norton?
I have a couple of questions. Um, back to the issue with the traffic. So now that JW Powell goes through and you said that uh the, the TIA didn't take that into account initially, what the effect on that intersection will be at Wetstone and JW Powell. So you said it might need to be reevaluated after buildout. Um, how does, how does that process look after buildout and what the traffic, you know, demands are? And can they go back and say, okay, this triggered more and who's responsible then for mitigating that?
So I might actually defer to the applicant who might be a little bit more familiar. Charity, are you able to speak to that?
Commissioner Norton, um, so we did a TIA traffic impact analysis for JWP and it looked at projections of when JWP is fully built out, all the way from um Pine Canyon to Canyon Del Rio. So those projected traffic counts were considered. And the result of that analysis had indicated that there could be a roundabout at Wetstone and JWP. So in the um, the phase two block plat that will be coming to the commissioners in July, I believe, there was a recommendation to dedicate right of way. We already had enough set aside in the right of way for Wetstone, so no additional dedications were needed. But that analysis has already been made that there could be a roundabout in the future once JWP is fully constructed.
So the, the right of way is set aside in case it's needed?
It's set aside for Canyon Del Rio. So with the roundabout, additional acquisition would be needed from adjacent property owners that are not part of Canyon Del Rio.
So then basically it will defer to the city later on to improve that intersection based on traffic needs at the time. Is that how, so you, you're, I guess what you're saying is you've done your part by allowing for right-of-way allowances
Correct.
for something future. It's not going to be on you to go back and put in a roundabout.
We won't have to dedicate any more um property for that, correct?
Um, you probably might want to stay because my questions probably um are for you. Could you um, could you tell us about the product? And the reason I ask about the product is in the PDR uh point systems about um the CCNRs won't forbid and the setbacks won't forbid and an ADU. Does the product allow for an ADU? Do you, do you all go into that depth when you're looking at earning that point?
Um, so we are still evaluating what type of product we want to have in that subdivision. But um, what I can tell you is that there would be an ability, if, if someone wanted to, they could have an ADU within the, the, the um building. Or they could also potentially have uh ADU um horizontally on the site. And so when we're saying it's not prohibitive, it would just be a matter of how a buyer would want to, to look at that site and we would work with them on that. So I think there's creative ways that we could achieve an ADU if a buyer wanted one.
So does um similar to like what Capstone did at Crestview where they offered ADUs as an option? Would this product offer an ADU as an option?
I don't know that. Um, at this time, like I said, we're still evaluating different product types, but it's not prohibited, so it could be an option.
Thank you. I think my other question is for, for Ben. Um, so this is more just a, like a staff comment. And I think I made the same kind of comments the last time we saw some PRDs come through. Um, especially since this commission was involved in um approving the new PRD standards in this point system. Um, I'm, it's still um bothers me that we get, they get one point per seating area. You know, I, I think there's more that can be done as, and as we see more by right PRD things come through here and we want to improve these developments towards things that the city's looking for. I'm just, it's just as a red flag that it comes up for me that um, there's a, there's only five points, but we're getting like a point per bench. So just wanted to, I think Tiffany's on, so I hope Tiffany kind of heard that as well. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, so does the applicant have a presentation? Okay, so if there's questions for the applicant, CJ?
So my question has to do with um the CCRs. And I know in other developments, there has been um language in the CCRs that um requires an HOA to allow less than 30-day short-term rentals. And I'm wondering if that's the intent in this area, too.
No, it is not.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Do a motion? I move that we uh, hold on, let me see here, forward the preliminary plat to City Council according to the findings uh in the report with a recommendation for approval. And it is, do we have a PZ number? No. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So Josh has seconded the motion. Any other discussion? Just wondering why it doesn't have a PZ number.
Me. My, my clerical error. I apologize. Would you like me to, to provide that for you for the, for the record?
That would probably be good.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll hold on that and add that to the record. In the meantime, do we want to take a vote?
There is one on your, on your report. It's PZ 24 dash 00015 dash 01.
Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Ben. Thank you. Um, miscellaneous items to and from commission members? Hearing none. Um, I'm going to move that we adjourn and it's 4:59 PM. Thank you.